Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, we will call this special meeting of council to order. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Mayor Patterson, there is quorum.
Wonderful. So just by way of introduction, the purpose of this public meeting, which is required pursuant to the Retail Business Holidays Act, is to provide any person who attends the meeting an opportunity to make representations in respect of a proposed bylaw regarding an exemption to the Retail Business Holidays Act. If granted, this exemption would permit retail businesses in the downtown business improvement area to operate on New Year's Day, Family Day, Good Friday, Easter Sunday, and Christmas Day, in addition to Victoria Day, Canada Day, Labor Day, and Thanksgiving Day, which are already exempted from the restrictions of the Act in Kingston. The format of the meeting will follow that which is prescribed in the city's procedural bylaw. Delegations will be permitted to make representations on the matter, and following each delegate's address, members of council will be provided an opportunity to ask up to two questions of the delegate. And after each round of questioning, the next delegate will be invited to speak. Interested persons are requested to give their name and address for recording in the minutes. And there's also a sign and sheet for interested members of the public at the back of the room. And then, once all the delegations have spoken, then I will close the meeting and just indicate some next steps from this point. So with that, given that we may have more than three delegations, I think the best route is if we were to waive our procedural bylaw to allow for more than three delegations. So could I have a motion from council for that? Moved by Councilor Ossanik, seconded by Councilor Bohm. Okay, so we have this motion to waive our rules to allow for more than three delegations. So please vote. And that carries. Okay, so we will then move to the delegation section. We have three delegations that are already listed. First, Doug Ritchie, Managing Director, Downtown Kingston BIA, will appear before council to speak to the passage of the bylaw.
Mayor Patterson, city councillors, all those present, I'm Doug Ritchie, Managing Director of the Downtown Kingston Business Improvement Area. The Retail Business Holiday Act prevents a small subset of businesses from opening unless they seek a tourism exemption. We meet and exceed the requirements to be declared a tourism area for these purposes. Certainly, much more than 25% of our retail business establishments participate with the tourism market. The attractions were required to have, natural attractions. We exceed the requirement. Historical attractions. We have hundreds of historical attractions in the BIA or within two kilometers of it. The cultural attractions, again, the Grand Theatre, the K-Rock Centre, Springer Market Square, the skating rink, clubs, festivals, events. We greatly exceed the requirement. The Act is a little archaic. It, over the decades, has been modified with an awful lot of exemptions that, in a way, kind of take you down to just fashion outlets and gift stores can't be open on certain days. Because the exemptions include foodstuffs, tobacco, antiques, handicrafts, pharmacies, gasoline and motor oil, nursery stock, gardening supplies, fresh fruit and vegetables, books, newspapers, periodicals, art galleries, liquor, any retail goods sold from a tourist establishment, without a definition, education, recreation, amusement, prepared meals, living accommodations, laundromats, rental of vehicles or boats, servicing and repair of vehicles or boats. And then, there's tourist exemptions. There are 29 different municipalities, and that's only up to 2012 was the research we were able to find. So Ganonacque, Ottawa, Markham, Windsor, Oakville, Port Hope, Prince Edward County, in Toronto, the Distillery District, the Downtown Young BIA, all have year-round exemptions, already ended as of 2012. I presume there's some more since then. Holidays create travel. In Kingston, the biggest tourist market is VFR, Visiting Friends and Relatives. When those people come back to town for Easter or Family Day, they often go out for brunch or lunch at a downtown restaurant as a family. Many, many businesses are already allowed to be open. Very few are not. If any business that operates in this entertainment cluster, a boutique retailer, needs to operate like part of the attraction of the entertainment district, fashion outlets and gift stores need to be open on days when restaurants and hotels are open. The tourist area exemption does not force any business to open on a holiday or force any employee to work. The Employee Standards Act covers that. It just gives the right to choose to open to service the visitor market created by a holiday. So please support a bylaw declaring the Downtown Kingston BIA a tourist area for purposes of exempting businesses in the BIA from the restrictions of the Retail Holidays Business Act on a year-round basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Councilor Neal?
Yes, a couple of questions, casting back my memory, which is always dangerous. But I believe in 1998, there was a similar motion brought by the BIA from Victoria Day to Thanksgiving Day specifically. And it's my understanding that, at that time, applying the argument of having a level playing field, the whole city was declared a tourist area. If I'm a retailer in the West End, the East End, I would think that that's, that argument would resonate. Do you have any objection to if this proposal comes forward to council? Would you support the idea that it be citywide? I know they don't, you don't represent them. But would you indeed support that?
Well, we would not oppose it. I mean, we just speak for the BIA. It's the one we know definitely qualifies for the tourist exemption. But as in the 90s, whichever year it was, we certainly would not oppose council considering making it citywide.
Thank you. Well, my last question, the, I checked with our transit department, and right now, operating buses on a Sunday schedule, the reduced schedule on statutory holidays, costs taxpayers around $22,000. That there are three of those non-transit days that the BIA are requesting. Would you have the expectation that the buses operate at that time? I know a lot of retail workers depend on buses. A lot of customers depend on buses. Would you have the expectation that the buses will run on those days?
I don't think this creates any additional person visits downtown. I think this is people that are already there, dining out and shopping places that are open. And this is just asking that the places that are currently not allowed to be open be open too. So certainly, the, you know, Easter weekend, lots of families, kids that have moved away, come back to Kingston. A whole ton of them apparently think a great family gathering is going out for brunch or lunch. They're already doing that. And if the sun is shining and spring has arrived, which it looks like it might this year, then those people are already downtown and coming downtown. So I don't see additional person visits, really.
So, so I believe, if I heard rightly, you don't have an expectation that the buses would need to run on those days?
I'm not sure. I know what level of service happens on those days. I'm used to hearing Sunday service on some holidays, and I don't know.
So I allowed that only because it was a clarification of your second question. Just a reminder to councillors, you have two questions for each delegation. Councilor Turner, or Deputy Mayor Turner?
Thank you, and through you. Thank you for your presentation tonight. I liked one of the things you said. If they choose to open, I did some research today. So my question to you is, I believe if you choose to open, that the employees will benefit financially because they will receive one and a half times the pay on the statutory holiday, plus being paid for the day. Can you answer that question?
Yes, there's, in other businesses that are allowed to be open but still have to meet the requirements of the Employment Standards Act, there tend to be always employees that look forward to getting that day. So it's higher pay, and they get another day to choose of their own liking when they're off, so.
So it's a benefit? Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to know. Thanks.
Any other questions? Councilor Hudson?
I've been approached by this, that what has happened in the past is, and I'm just going to ask you to comment on this. Okay, so that's the nature of my question. The argument is that they, when the BIA got its exemption in 98 and ensuing years, that meant other businesses felt they had to be open in the rest of the city, as Councilor Neal was pointing out. And workers were working and felt forced to work, the law notwithstanding. And, and I, I'm sorry, but my experience is that people often feel they're compelled to work if they want to keep their job or get the hours that they've had previously. So, and to rub salt in the wound, a lot of the stores downtown simply did not open anyway, even though the exemption being, you know, solid. So, the question is...
Would you like to comment?
Would you like to comment on that?
Okay, thank you.
Well, unlike the malls, who in lease agreements with their tenants dictate their hours of operation and actually are kind of full partners because they monitor their sales and expenses as well, and often have a combination lease that's a certain amount of rent, but a certain cut of the revenues. Downtown is pretty well 700 small entrepreneurs that develop their own business model and work away at it. So we have lots of stores that still aren't open on Sundays. We have restaurants that close Monday. We have restaurants that close Tuesday. That's their business. This is just the freedom to choose. And the Employment Standards Act dictates how you have to deal with your employees. And you are not allowed to make them work against their wishes.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our second delegation this evening is Justine Skala, owner of Minotaur Games and Gifts.
Yes, hello, I'm Justine Skala. I live at 173 Montreal Street, and I own Minotaur Games and Gifts at 78 Princess Street. So I am a big proponent of making this, making Kingston open for business 365 days a year. One of my reasons for doing so is that I believe that the legislation is somewhat outdated. We have a multicultural society. We have people of different faiths, different cultures, from different parts of the world. And to limit the times that they're open to Christian holidays seems somewhat discriminatory. Seems non-inclusive. Second point, again, as Doug Ritchie mentioned, I find the exemptions to be sort of arbitrarily punitive at this point. Bookstore could be open, but a store that sold gifts can't. Yeah, so it seems quite arbitrary to me. I also feel that, in general, the public would like this to happen. We have customers who come in and ask, "Why wasn't everybody open on Good Friday?" You know, we're downtown, half the people were open arbitrarily. Some people weren't, you know. Why, why is this? Easter weekend is a pretty busy tourist weekend. Our Saturdays are gangbusters. People are on the streets. I think it makes sense to allow them to choose where they want to go and where they want to shop. I'd also like to point out that the application of this law seems to be almost entirely complaint-driven. I know of many businesses that stay open regardless, and the only ones that have been punished have been businesses that have suffered complaints from either the public, other businesses. So it's not applied equally across the board. Also, I would like to point out that independent owners and operators, you know, are in the business of retail because they love retail, because they love connecting with the public. We don't tend to go into retail to become rich, at least not independent Kingston business owners. We do it out of our love of connecting with the public, the goods that we sell, being part of a lively downtown. But we also do it because we enjoy the freedom of choice that owning a business gives us. So I like to set my own hours. I like to have the store open when it makes sense to me, both on what my, based on what my customers want to do and also what I want to do. So there are a lot of small owner-operators who will not be open on statutory holidays, and that's fine. In response to the question, I'm just throwing this in here in response to the question about making employees work. Anyone who makes their employee work on a statutory holiday is breaking the law. And it is the employee's responsibility to step up and make sure that their employer is treating them well. You know, unfortunately, I agree, some people don't. But that is where the problem is, not in being open on a day and following the Employment Standards Act. I looked very carefully over the Act, and the other thing that bothers me is that the language in the Act is quite vague. So just for example, there's a part of the Act which talks about stores that sell goods listed under the exemption, and sundries can be open on a given day. I looked up the definition of sundries, and it's goods not to, goods that are not important enough to be counted. And so to me, that is extremely vague. I also looked for the definition of sundries on the Government of Canada website, and I could find, and on the Ontario provincial website, and there was no definition whatsoever. So, and there are many other examples. I just wanted to quote one. But this gives a gray, a large gray area for people to either claim an exemption or be charged under the Act. And I think that nonspecificity is a problem as well.
30 seconds.
Okay, so that's basically it. I just want to say, as a downtown business owner, I think it's about time we made this change.
Thank you. Any questions for the delegation? Councilor Bohm?
Thank you, we're shipping through you. Based on what I'm seeing here, we're really talking about five days. So I guess, in your opinion, how important to a business owner, where there can be very slim profit margins and to maintain economic viability, would be adding those five days and giving the flexibility to kind of have the freedom to operate your business?
Yes, I believe that if, I personally will never be open on Christmas. I'm not going to be open on New Year's Day. I think that the number of people downtown is minimal, and I want my Christmas and New Year's off. That's my choice. However, I think the other three days included in this Act are big days, potential big days. You know, they're holidays, the tourists. People coming to visit families or tourists to Kingston would enjoy shopping on. And as I mentioned earlier, and as you mentioned now, owning a business is somewhat of a marginal enterprise, and that little bit can actually make the difference in a month.
So really, this is about kind of just giving that freedom and leveling the playing field for everybody?
That's exactly what I feel, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Neal?
Just quickly, thank you for your presentation. I'm a little curious, maybe it's the way it's defined, but I've always thought of Minotaur as a gift store. Maybe that's because I buy gifts there. But is, would you not qualify under that exemption for gift stores? I'm just curious.
Gift stores aren't exempted. Gift stores have to be closed on those days. I will say, however, that we, I actually, in case I got asked this question, pulled up the part of the Act that allows us to be exempted, which is, under exemptions, education, recreation, and amusement. Section 2 does not apply in respect of the admission of the public to premises for educational, recreational, or amusement purposes. Section 2 is the part where they talk about businesses that can't be open. Or in respect of the sale or offering for sale of goods or services incidental thereto. So because we sell products that are related to entertainment, and because we provide entertainment on those days, we invite people to come in and play board games, we actually are able to be open legally. But that doesn't mean, I think, that, you know, others should be excluded.
Thanks for that clarification. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, so one thing that we do need to do, and I'm just saying this, is we do have a third delegation that's on the added. So we actually should approve the added. If I can just get a mover and seconder. Moved by Councilor Bohm, seconded by Councilor Neal. Please vote. And that carries. So delegation number three is Cindy Gibson, owner of Agent 99 and Blueprint Clothing, and Bev Allenson, owner and Managing Director, Confederation Place Hotel.
I'll go first. Thank you, Mayor, councillors, and all others in attendance. My name is Cindy Gibson. I do own Agent 99 and Blueprint Clothing. At 244 and 246 Princess Street. I live at 73 Traymore. And if you don't know where I'm located, it's in the center of the Big Dig. So come on by. This issue hit home for me last Easter. I had a lot of messages from people who had come to town, who had previously lived in Kingston or were in town visiting their kids, who were students in the middle of exams at Queebs. They wanted to know why they couldn't get in, when they could get in some other stores. And I'd not seen that before, so it made me think that times have definitely changed. So I talked to my staff about this. I work alongside my staff, and they have a millennial mindset. The days that they want off now are not necessarily the days that people had wanted off in previous generations. Whether it's Diwali, or the High Holidays, or Chinese New Year, or a music festival, or a family reunion. The grad trip at Reading Week was a big one for me. And I assure you, they all want St. Patrick's Day off, and I'm working on that. But it's just talking about it made me realize that things have changed. When I look at the slick marketing campaigns that are out there right now for visiting Kingston, there have been some beautiful videos shown to me at some meetings. I think that's exactly why we should have everyone open and available on a weekend like Easter, because that's just the expectation now. And a lot of these other municipalities are doing it and drawing people away if we don't. James Refurniture has yet to open on Sunday, and I'm great with that. They're a wonderful neighbor. It's not, it's not really up to me to decide what's best for them. Hairdressers, some of them still close on Mondays. I'm fine with that. But if one of my neighbors chooses to try to open on one of these days, I don't think that they should be punished. I think they should be just like the tobacconists and the florists who are allowed to open as well. And I would be one of those people. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Patterson and councillors. It's been a long time since I stood up here. Makes me a little nervous. I've talked to my hotel staff, who deal with these people that would be out shopping from our business. Because I have talked to people as they come up to the front desk with their questions. But when I talked to them, we sat down and we wrote out what they felt was important. I can read this off to you, and I'd be glad to leave it. You know, some of the same things are reiterated. But it says, "I'd like to support the BIA's effort to declare the downtown area as a tourist area. I've been engaged in the hospitality business for over 35 years in downtown. Kingston prides itself on being a tourist-friendly destination. However, we have neglected an important part of a visitor's experience, shopping. Over the years, guests have frequently asked why the stores are closed when the restaurants and others are open. This enhanced designation would permit the entire area to be seen and appreciated when the tourists are here. No doubt, this more fulsome experience of our historic town would encourage return visits. Many of the retail businesses in downtown are suffering through city infrastructure improvements while facing competitive threats of online and mega-discounting retailing. Anything we can do to help their viability would be good for all of Kingston. The success of downtown Kingston depends on the relationship between historic architecture and the capacity to serve the public with restaurants and unique shopping experiences." It's just some of the things that our staff has said. But a lot of students' parents come to visit on those holidays, the ones that don't go home. We have a lot of guests visiting some of our residents in the family. We've had students living with us over periods of time, and so they would constantly have people coming into the city. Or they themselves would want to go out and, you know, when they're not going to school, or they're looking for things to entertain themselves with. And shopping is definitely an entertainment experience for a lot of people. So we do get a lot of requests for this kind of thing. And we thought it was important that someone like a hotelier, who deals with this kind of thing every day, you know, would bring this to council to, for their consideration. Does anyone have any questions? Sorry.
Thank you. Well, that's perfect. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, seeing no questions, thank you both very much.
These are both the same ones. Bigger for me to read.
Okay, so that, that takes us through the list of pre-registered delegations. Is there anybody else here in council chambers this evenings that wishes to speak? Yes, sir. Just going to invite you up to the podium if you can just give your name and address for the minutes.
Hello, Mayor Patterson, City Council. My name is Adam Pache. I'm currently the manager at Kingston Gaming Nexus and a former owner of Four Color Comics, Four Color Eight-Bit Comics and Games on Bag, on Bag, or Wellington Street. A few years ago, my store was actually punitive, was punished for being open on Easter Friday. What happens is that every, we have a regular event on Friday nights, but I have a regular customer base that would attend every week. And then for the Easter Saturday, Friday, I actually had almost double the amount of my regulars because of the fact that I had the regular students that couldn't go home. I had returning students down for the holidays. I had people on vacation. And so, and I mistakenly hadn't gotten an email reminding me that I wasn't able to be open that day. So I was open, I had a store full of people, about almost 40. So I was open, I had a store full of people, about almost 40 customers in the store during the day, looking forward to playing in a regular tournament, and then I had a police officer come in saying, "Look, just so you know, there's a law against being open on this day," and she actually apologized profusely, saying, "This is not my choice, I really apologize, if it was my choice, I'd let you open, but this is the law," and I had to force about 40 customers outside of my store. And then it's, after that, I regularly had events, worldwide events, that I could not run, because there was, it was run on a, on a holiday, especially like Easter weekend, and I'd have customers messaging me, asking me, "Why aren't you open? We want to play." And I'd have to constantly have to say, like, "I'm sorry, but we can't, we're not allowed to be open." I'd have so many people from out of town complaining that, like, "Why can't, like, why can't, we're down, we're down for the weekend, can't we come?" And so I found, you know, it's something I found with Kingston, Kingston prides itself on being a tourist location, and I've found, like, being in multiple stores in town, Easter is big with tourists. We have so many people who want to be shopping, and who are forced to not be able to do it because of a law that chooses what days of the year are not tourist days in Kingston. And yet, I found, if Kingston is a tourist town, which we definitely are, we've been pushing it, we should definitely allow the downtown, at least, or even the full city, to be designated as a tourist area, to allow stores to be open, to help the actual, like, not only the tourists, but our regular customers. I find like it's a little archaic to not be able to be open, to help customers, and like, not being able to have the choice. Like it is, like they are standard holidays, and so it's up to the store themselves if they can, if they want to, they can be closed, if they want to, the owners can be there, and they can have the employees if they choose. So it's not a must, but it's an ability for stores that Kingston definitely needs. In fact, when I'd regularly attend the Downtown Business Association meetings, I'd bring it up, that Kingston should change the law, and I'd get standing ovations from the downtown businesses that would love to be, have the ability to choose to be open on days that customers want to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
Okay, so Frank Dixon, 495 Alfred, Department Two. I'll be very brief, I think the business people have covered the case well, and my, I mean, point is that I would like to see a city council, on this particular issue, work with staff to connect with the communities that have taken this step as important tourist destinations, to get feedback on how that has worked out for them. And I believe that Counselor Neal's point on the bus service is important as well, because retail does not pay well, I've worked in it myself, and I know that. And they may be reliant on the transit service to make it down to work, and this may be the additional cost, since the holidays, you know, especially Christmas perhaps, would not be that much use. So I would just like to see council work with staff on that, to connect with those cities that have done so. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no questions? I don't see anybody else here that has not spoken. So with that, Counselor Neal, did you have a point of order, or?
I, since we're not allowed to say point of clarification, I'm just curious what the process will be, or when.
Yeah, so no, that's good. So, so I think we'll close the public meeting, and so just so everyone understands next steps, thank you for the comments tonight. They will be included in a staff report that will come to City Council on April the 5th. At that point, council will have a decision to make. If we choose to pass the bylaw, then there will be a 30-day appeal period, during which anyone can appeal to the OMB, and after that appeal period is passed, if there is not appeal, then the bylaw will come into effect at that point. Right, what that says. All right. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Oh, bylaws. Thank you, Mr. Cope. I tried, guys, I tried. Mr. Clerk.
Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Holland, that bylaw one be given its first and second reading.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Holland, that bylaw one be given its third reading.
Please vote. And that carries. Motion to adjourn, moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Deputy Mayor Turner. Please vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.